Went to the traditional board meeting, at which time we will again discuss the T I P A R Holdings fourteen oh one East State Street. Okay, so that's the little business for tonight. Let's get started recognizing the quorum. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Olean. Planning Board in session. First, we'll start with the public hearing. We'll call that into session recognizing the quorum. Public hearing tonight is for T A R Holdings LLC site plan number three dash twenty-two and fourteen zero one East State Street. Could you read the role, please?
Tom Barnes.
Here.
Craig Paulson.
Here.
Mary Fay.
Here.
Jared Benyon.
Here.
Reed Micklefresh.
Here.
And did you read the legal notes, please?
Legal notice, public hearing, City of Olean Planning Board, Tar Holdings LLC, fourteen oh one East State Street, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, six thirty P M via Zoom, public hearing and meeting link, which can be found in the City of Olean Planning Board's web page. And it's also in person at the City of Olean Municipal Building, room one nineteen. Please take notice that in accordance with the provisions of section nine point one point six of the zoning law of the City of Olean, a public hearing will be held on the date and time specified above in connection with an application that has been filed and received by the Planning Board of the City of Olean for preliminary site plan review and approval of a project at the above noted location. A copy of the preliminary site plan application is on file for inspection in the City Clerk's Office of the City of Olean. Frank Caputo, City Clerk, Carrie Kerper, Program Coordinator.
Thank you. The purpose of the public hearing is for members of the general public to ask questions and make comments on projects in front of the our planning board for review, so that we can understand what the neighbors of the project are thinking with respect to the project, so. I would ask at this point for if there are any comments or questions from the members of the general public. And I realize you'll have to text us, and when you do, could you please tell us your name and your address before you start would be questions or comments. And I would say that you should understand that the public hearing is the only real opportunity for the members of the general public to communicate to the planning board on on this project. So if you're here to learn about or to ask questions or make comments on this project, now is the time for you to step forward and ask your question. Let's see, there might be another person.
Yes, it looks like Mr. Adaman may have joined us a little late, Tom.
Mr. Adaman, we are in the public hearing right now. And I'm I'm as I've said, it's it's time, this is the time for you to to ask questions and make comments. And if you do not do so, we'll close the public hearing and your opportunity for making comments and asking questions will be over. So I encourage you to to talk to us or text with us here. Questions, make comments.
I apologize, though, that's also me. I'm on there twice. So the M. Raderman and the Bliss Raderman, I'm the same person.
Could you read that for us?
Yeah, I sure can. It says, I live on North Clark Street, and I'm happy to see business coming in, but I'm concerned about what will happen to our neighborhood. Are there any traffic studies planned?
Okay, and and could you tell us your name and your address, please?
It's Connie Barth, two oh one North Clark Street.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Now, now to respond to your question. There is an email relating to anticipated increased traffic flows on Clark Street, which Carrie, I could ask you to read, but if there's a direct response from the applicant, I'd like to hear that as well.
Kevin, do you want me to read your email, or do you want to explain it?
Either way, Carrie, I can explain it.
Okay.
I I just had it pulled up from my reference as well, so.
Okay.
Connie, this is Kevin Rosen. I work for MS Consultants. We are Tim Horton's engineer and architectural consultant for this project. So we did reach out to the New York State DOT regarding the traffic impact study, given the type of business that is going in here, the size of the building and the location of the site. New York DOT said they do not have the jurisdiction here. So we went through the city and the City of Olean, said a traffic impact study would not be needed. Based on the the type of site that we're looking at, it is a coffee shop with drive-through. And what we do to analyze these types of sites is refer to the design manuals. In this case, the I T E trip generation manual. And according to that manual, a coffee shop with drive-through produces a hundred and sixty-two peak hour trips. What that means is that there are a hundred and sixty-two vehicles coming in and out of the the site during the peak hour. That would be a morning peak hour in this case. So another traffic analysis is that, you know, in a site like this, you really only have about fifty percent of the the trips that the I T E generation manual talks about are considered new trips. Or, you know, fifty percent would be passed by. So those travelers are currently traveling that route, and they would pass by this site on their way to work or back home. So, you know, eighty-one of those trips, again, in and out would be new trips. So we have the two driveways. We've got the one on East State Street and one on North Clark Street. So we would, you know, consider that the customer traffic would really be split proportionally to the existing volumes of traffic on each roadway, which is about a ninety-ten split. East State Street is the heavily traveled road. North Clark Street is the the side road in this case. So it's about a ninety-ten split based on the existing amount of traffic. And the the number of vehicles that travel that road, we pulled from the New York State DOT Traffic Data Viewer. So that's where we got our our data for that. So what that does is, you know, if we consider the ninety-ten split, it equates to approximately thirty-six new vehicles. Again, that that would be new vehicles total, so seventy-two in and out trips being added to East State Street during the morning peak hour. And that's really only five percent of the existing volume that travel East State Street. And four new vehicles, eight in eight in and out trips being added to North Clark Street during the morning peak hour. So based on those small increases, five percent of the existing volume, that is the justification for not needing the traffic study.
Okay, I I'd like to ask Ms. Barth if she has any questions about that, or 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 if you'd like to explore that any further, or if you have an issue with the analysis that was just explained by Kevin and at the same time, I'd like to also ask the the rest of the board whether or not they agree with the analysis and the assumptions that were made in the in the analysis. So Ms. Barth, if you could text back if you're satisfied with that, or if you have have any comments on that. And board, please weigh in at the same time.
This is Mary. It seems reasonable and logical based on their design manual, the estimation of the number of trips and how they divided out. I'm not sure the ninety-ten split, if that's estimated accurately, although definitely the greater majority, the majority of the traffic would be from East State. I I think it seems reasonable and wouldn't, doesn't seem to need a a traffic study.
Other comments? I I saw that Ms. Barth was satisfied with the with Kevin's analysis. So and any other comments from the board?
Yes, this is Greg here. I would I would suspect that that the number of trips on Clark might be a little low for the peak, simply because I could see some people not wanting to go back out onto East State directly. They may, it may just be the jump from your exit onto Clark, onto Clark, to the light. I think that'll probably increase more than for an hour for that peak hour, but I don't see it as being onerous. I don't I don't believe.
Other comments from the board?
Yeah, I think these are the standard assumptions. These seem rational.
Okay, any other board comments? You know, my thought is that even if even these, if these assumptions are are a little low, even if it's two or three times what the estimated traffic flow increase on Clark Street is, it seems like we're still talking about a very small increase in traffic flow on the Clark Street, so. I I'm satisfied myself without requiring the applicant to to undertake a traffic study. Is everybody of the same mind?
Great.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Are there other comments from the general public that who are zooming in on the call?
I mean, I think that was it.
Ms. Barth, are you are you, do you have any anything else before we close the public hearing? I realize there's a little delay while she types something to us.
She said no, but thank you.
Okay, great, great. Well, I I think it's time to close the public hearing then, and please, if you if you like, Ms. Barth, please continue to stay logged in, because, as I mentioned earlier, when we close the public hearing, we will then open the regular meeting, and we will again discuss the Tar Holdings project, the Tim Horns project. So stay with us if you if if you're interested in, you can see what we do with it. Okay, at this point, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
Made and seconded Greg and Mary. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's carried. So the public hearing is closed. Recognizing a quorum, I would like to open the the regular June twenty-seventh meeting of the City of Olean Planning Board. In terms of the roll call, please show the same members present and the same folks here from the applicant and the general public present as were present during the public hearing. First order of business is the reading and approval of the June thirteenth meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve as as transmitted?
I know.
That was Reed and J R.
Reed and J R. Thank you. Are there any revisions or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye. Opposed? That's carried. Okay, we'll move right into old business, which is the T I T A R Holdings LLC site plan oh three dash twenty-two fourteen zero one State Street. Let's see. The first thing I I think maybe would be the the department comments. You want to go through those for us, Carrie?
Sure. There were no comments of concern, none were received, except in two departments. One was the Water Administration, which was addressed. There's a cross connection control required, which is a backflow, backflow preventer. The applicant is aware and has those plans. And with electric, our electrical department is offering help. They just said, let me know there will be any changes needed at the traffic signal. They'll make those accommodations.
Are there anticipated to be any such traffic signal changes? I guess that's a question for the engineer.
There were not, Tom, no.
Okay, thank you. So nothing from the departments, then. We've also received the a communication relating to that underground conveyance system, which is identified as a pipe structure. But I I'm given to understand that it's not, it's located far enough east that it won't be underneath the building. And there was no indication of any any records of a underground tunnel conveyor system, although on social media, I did see a comment from somebody who said that that he worked at the tile plant back in the day, and he was involved in loading from the conveyor belt system, so. I guess I just want the applicant to be put on notice that there is some anecdotal evidence that does not show up in the property records. Okay. Kevin, you got that comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, what else do we have? We have updated site plan. I've I've looked through that. Just had one or two comments or questions. First, um you know, these are wide entry and egress paths that that cross what otherwise would be sidewalks. And the sidewalks are being removed and paved, so is there any intention to to stripe that crosswalk area? I see right now that you have ingress and egress arrows, pavement, pavement arrows. But any thought to including striping for the crosswalks through there?
That was not added. Typically, we would add striping, you know, across a main intersection, across the driveway. It's it's dirt jurisdictional based. If if you would like us to add striping, we could add the striping.
Well, I throw that out to the board. Is it, is that something that the board would like to see? Are you okay with it as is?
Is that something required in the code?
I don't believe it is.
Yeah. I can't think of any place in town that has that offhand.
Me neither.
Okay, so I'm not hearing any any interest in that, so let's move on then. The ADA parking, the loading zone between the two ADA spots. Am I interpreting the the plan correctly? That the cutaway of the sidewalk, there is, that's a one-twelve slope, so it it lowers down to the the pavement level there.
That's correct. It would be flush with the the striped space between the ADA spots.
Great, thank you. The third, the third question I had is, you know, I I I used to go to the Tim Horns on North Union Street quite regularly, and every week they'd take a delivery of of supplies from Cisco on a semi truck. And that site, when it was designed, maybe was designed a little without enough foresight for for that semi truck unloading, because it it seems like they have to, they have to park the semi truck in the in the in the parking area. And in in your in your plan, also, there isn't really a semi truck unloading area. So you probably will be stuck, you know, if you're fortunate enough that the that the truck gets there when there are no people parking in the parking spots, you can park in the the parking spots to the east side of the parking lot. But otherwise, you're probably going to be parking in the middle of the of the drive aisle. So is that is that part of your thinking, or or i- i- am I missing something in terms of your plan?
Blake, you could expand on this, but in when we talked before about this, the deliveries at this site would likely be before open, so there shouldn't be too many customers. We also have a a wide enough drive aisle that customers could drive around a delivery vehicle if they did park within that drive aisle.
And you think that the first of all, you know, when I would go through the North Union Street, Tim Horton's it it the deliveries were not, they were during business hours and weren't before the open. But the other thing is, so if the semi truck pulls in from East State Street and pulls down the drive aisle to unload, then you figure he's going to go back around the the bypass lane and out onto Clark Street or or out onto four seventeen, and you think the the turning radiuses and so far, they're going to be adequate for them to get by, especially if they're delivering during business hours.
Those, those are the truck turns that we ran to pull in off of East State Street and then pull back out via North Clark Street.
So you you're satisfied with with that design? Given the 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 need to to pull those, to pull semis.
Tom, if you can see my screen, too, I could show you that truck turn on the site.
Yeah, I'm seeing.
So they could pull in, pull all the way around, and then back out on North Clark.
Right. Okay, I see up in the upper right there, it looks like they might be cutting that corner, so as long as there's nobody in a queue back then, you'd be all right.
Correct.
Well, you have that open. You have that dumpster back there, and it does stay on the plans. It says, I don't I don't know what the language is. I can't recall. But that that dumpster is going to be fenced all the way around, and you'd have to open that up to to bring garbage into the dumpster. Is that the plan?
Yes, I think there is the doors on that dumpster area, and here's the the dumpster turn as well. Or the garbage truck turn.
Right.
It is fenced in all the way.
Okay. Last point that I wanted to address is the notes on the sheet say that the contractor is liable for any damage to neighbors' property. I I didn't notice, maybe I missed it. Are you going to do any stormwater fencing during construction?
For a lot of erosion and sediment control?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, there would be a silk fence around the perimeter of the site in any of the
Is that on your plans already?
Yes. Yes, it's on sheet sheet C eight. I can share that screen as well. So, yeah, we'll have the the silk fence around the perimeter to prevent any sediment laden runoff getting onto the adjacent properties and the roadway. And any new catch basins that are installed, we will install filter bags, and then we're proposing the rock construction entrance for during construction.
Right. Okay, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that was everything that I picked up that I wanted to ask about. Throw it open to the board for for additional questions or comments.
I I just wanted to add for the delivery of the trucks, we are are working with our company lineage. Right now, our Allegheny location, technically Olean, gets delivered at three o'clock in the morning before we're open, and then it then go right to to the North Union Street store at about four, four-thirty in the morning. That's technically business hours, because they're twenty-four hours there. But this location won't be twenty-four hours, so we're trying to see if there's a way that we can get this store to be the first one. We we can't guarantee that, but it would be the best situation if we did that.
Sure. Well, you know, those are always things that you have to iron out. I just wanted to at least make certain that that was part of your decision calculus. Any other questions, comments from the board?
No, those were good ones.
Any other? Anything else before I ask for a motion to approve?
Oh, I think things look good.
Okay, I I'll accept the motion to approve the amended site plan as transmitted, as received.
Tom, I do recall from the last meeting, didn't you want the lighting shielded and night sky compliant?
Yes.
Okay.
Tom, we we did confirm with our photometric folks that it, they're night sky compliant lights.
Okay. There wasn't any other conditions where they're carried that we discussed the last time out?
I was looking for my notes. They weren't placed in my file, but that's my recollection.
Motion to approve the revised site plan?
Second, please.
Second.
Give me just a moment. I'm just looking through here. No, I don't see any other conditions, so. Okay. All in favor on the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's carried. Thanks for your your comprehensive plans, and we appreciate you investing in the City of Olean. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If you contact code enforcement, they will get you rolling with building permits, and you can move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you you folks are done, so if you want to sign off.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Just to continue with our agenda. Let's see. Staff have sent out the nightcom planning and zoning recorded webinars. And to the basic ones, a couple of additional ones have been added, which I don't know, we'll preface for I know, we'll preface for the sorts of projects that might come to us in the future. So, you know, keep in mind that. You can get your required. Annual training. By viewing these webinars and submitting. Online, your, the, the fact that you've. Taken the webinar, you viewed the webinar, so. I encourage all members to, to make use of this, the city paid for these, so. You know, it's required training, that New York State requires us to get four hours of training per year, so. Please look at those. Also. Staff have sent us the. Notice on the. Annual harassment prevention training. So everybody needs to take that. And submit the, the completion documentation. To Carrie. Or Kathy. So please do that. Carrie, do you have any other business?
I just have a communication. I had a meeting with the owner of the Olliam Center Mall today. And his colleague. I will be having a, that was in person, I'll be having a Zoom meeting tomorrow with he. His engineering team and other colleagues. To discuss the site plan review process and seeker. So just to let you know that will be forthcoming in the near future.
Yeah, that's a. That's going to be a real big project for us to review. It's already previously. Disturbed site, and I think we're, we're going to be leaning very heavily on. The competencies of. Their engineering consultants and also. Code enforcement in terms of compliance with the city and state building code, so. I, but I, I think that. You know, our review will be. Pretty straightforward. Given that the heavy lifting is being done by other parties to this, so.
Yeah, I do want to know, I explained to Mr. Ingrassia today that. We're going to determine a type one action and do a coordinated review. And request lead agency status by the City of Olliam Planning Board. So I will prepare the necessary, necessary documentation. The latter, and then I'll be sending that out to all interested and involved agencies on the planning boards behalf.
You know, of course, we won't do that until. The first time that they make their presentation to us.
Correct.
Right?
I just wanted to make him aware today that that'll be part of our discussion tomorrow.
Great. Anything else, any other business? Okay.
I remember Mary brought up an issue some time ago, and I don't know if we ever heard any follow up on it from anyone. Regarding any. City regulations about when cannabis. Dispensaries would open and, you know, for locating where they could be within the city and that kind of thing. For changing the zoning law for that, it's not mentioned at all. As a type of business that's allowed, so I'm not sure where we go with that.
I did make the mayor aware and as the board asked me to do.
The, to the best of my knowledge, and I. My knowledge may be. Out of date on this, but. I thought that we were still waiting for. New York State to promulgate. Regulations. Regarding locations for the various types of cannabis operations, you know, I mean. Regulations for locations would be different. For processors as opposed to retail outlets as opposed to. What do you call those? Lounges where you could. Actually use the substance, you know, so. I, I, I thought that we were still waiting for the state to promulgate those regulations, but as I say, I may be out of date, so that might be something that. Carrie, you could check with NICOM.
No, you're up to date.
Okay.
You are, and the mayor, I do believe, has talked with the city attorney and I'm not sure. What members are all of the common counsel, but I believe they're reading on that, so then they can make those changes accordingly.
So we would expect there to be. An amendment to the city zoning ordinance?
From my understanding, how the process would proceed.
Okay. And. In the interim, if somebody tries to put up a cannabis operation. In the city. I'm assuming that. The mayor would direct. Code enforcement to shut them down. Until they're approved.
I do believe that's what happened.
Isn't there one already on West Street?
I think there are three of them.
You mean already?
Didn't they get shut down?
So they. Anyone that's running right now, New York State will give them a license when they start licensing. That's what the states come down with.
Can everyone hear that? This is Tiffany, she's been taking our minutes today.
So. As of right now, we're between a rock and a hard place. They're not technically selling. They're selling. Stickers and you get. Yes, exactly, but New York State has come down and supposedly. Anyone who's currently doing that will not. Be able to become licensed when they are licensing in the future, so. We're kind of in New York's hands at this point.
Okay. So essentially, those business owners are shooting themselves in the foot as they do that.
Yes, and they have been warned.
Okay, I just. Curious, because I knew we had shops open and it's kind of like, how do you, that, how is that allowed when the regulations haven't created yet?
Yeah, they found a loophole and.
Right.
Their status right now. Is an enforcement issue that's outside our purview.
Sure.
But I assume that the. That the mayor and code enforcement and the city police would have something to do with. Shutting them down if.
Yeah.
If, if they haven't found the right loophole.
I do believe they're aware, I totally stayed out of it.
Carrie, I guess if. If you could remind the council that when they do that zoning update. That it should be reviewed by the planning board and zoning board, I believe, both.
Yes, I'll remind Jack to remind that, absolutely.
Thanks.
Of course.
Any other business? Well, assuming we have business. The. The next meeting of the planning board would be on the. The eleventh. Of July. And if we don't have business. It'll be later. So. I, I guess I would ask if there's a motion to adjourn for tonight. Moved, is there a second?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, reading J R.
Okay, reading J R, any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. That's carried. Wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, stay safe. Go see the fireworks.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks.
Any, any questions from Bob Clark?
He says, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you all, good night all.
Good night, thank you.